I would like to bring this West Carrollton Board of Education Business Meeting to order. It is Wednesday, May 5th, 2021. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mr. Henry?
Present.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
And now, if you would join us with our Mrs. Sanders kindergarten class in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We should have had an ESL class today.
They are so adorable. Just adorable. Alright. Okay, I will introduce everyone up here at the head table. We have our board members, Mr. Tom Wolf, we have Mr. Don Henry, we have our superintendent, Mrs. Andrea Townsend, or Dr. Andrea Townsend, I'm sorry. I'm Leslie Miller, board member, Mr. Joe Cox, board member, Mr. John Llewellyn, board member, and our treasurer, Mr. Ryan Sloan. And in the gallery, we have Mr. Jack Heg, our business manager, and Mr. Devon Berry, our Director of Human Resources. So, it is recommended that the agenda for the May 5th, 2020 meeting be adopted as presented. And I see that there is an addendum.
Yes, we need to add item number 11, add new item number 25, and new item number 26.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Do we get a motion?
Oh, a motion, I'm sorry. Motion? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Now roll call.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
It is recommended that the minutes of the regular meeting held on April 14th, 2021 be approved as submitted. I need a motion as second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any additions or corrections to be noted? No? Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
We do not have any comments from the public relating to agenda items only, so we will move on to our student representative report. Ashton, hello, good evening.
So, I don't really have too much to report today. The only thing really is unfortunately, we haven't gotten any applications yet for our, for next year's representatives. So, I'm gonna have to give my classmates some convincing so they send one in. I know Sarah is, I think, might be still interested, but we're gonna have to talk to her about that. And then, we had our roundtable. Unfortunately, I wasn't there, so I don't know if one of you wants to go over that, or...
Yeah, we, we had a meeting a couple weeks ago. Several, several members of some of the boards, the board members themselves were absent for various reasons, and several students as well. So, it was a, maybe about half the normal attendance we usually have for those, but, but we made some, some decisions I'll share real quick. In the middle of May, the kids, the students are gonna be collaborating together to decide on one or two topics for a planned meeting with legislators at the end of June. So, May the 15th is the deadline I kinda set for them. That's when I'm gonna follow up and see what they've come up with. And June the 26th, if my memory serves me correctly, I don't have it down here, but I think that's right. Very late June, if that's not the right date, we are going to schedule a meeting with different legislators again, and, and have the, the student reps present what they come up with between now and the end of June. So, those dates were at least kinda set up. And hopefully, if we have somebody that we've adopted to join the student rep program in West Carrollton, by the time we get to June, they can join into that conversation. And you're certainly welcome to as well. You're not gonna be in college yet, so... But, we certainly wanna convey our appreciation for what you've done this year and, and helping us with, with the, really what's the pilot thing for us. This is new, and I know, I know there's a lot of work to still do to tweak it a little bit, but we appreciate you being at these meetings and, and joining the roundtables and providing your feedback to, to help us as we started this. Do you, I guess the only thing I'd kinda ask you, do you have any, for, for those, nobody's really... Friday's the deadline to turn in those applications, so not real likely kids or students are even gonna see this or parents before that deadline. But, just for, for kicks, would you share just anything you would about your experience in doing this? And for those who might be interested?
Yeah, I've had a pretty, pretty great experience being involved with kinda the inner workings of how the district operates and getting a look at, you know, what goes on, you know, at, at board meetings. And I've kinda been able to make an impact in ways that I wouldn't have been able to without this program. Like mainly, I'm really thinking about, you know, meeting with those representatives. And also, it was really cool to speak at the groundbreaking ceremony, give that speech about kinda the future with our new buildings. But, I think, like, this can definitely be a very good force for change in the future. I know from these other districts, like Centerville, they've been able to really get some helpful and beneficial changes made in their district, whether it be through like clubs, or hiring new staff members, things like that. And I think going into the future, definitely, I know this year that, you know, the school didn't really know too much about what the student reps are. But I think next year, I want this district and the high school to know that we have student reps and to kinda make that communication stronger. So, yeah.
Very good. Well, thanks again, Ashton.
We've definitely enjoyed working with you. And we wish you luck in, in all of your endeavors. I'm sure you will be quite successful. And like Mr. Llewellyn said, we, we want you to come back for the, the June meeting, definitely. All the seniors are invited back, so...
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashton.
Thank you. Okay, um, we don't have... Oh! Yes, she's going to go to our communication update. And we have a, a sub this evening.
Yes, I'm not as colorful as Janine, by any means, so... Could you guys advance that for me? Try again. Okay. So, we have several ways you can see what's happening in our district. The district official Facebook page is West Carrollton City Schools. And if you prefer Twitter, you can follow us at WC City Schools. You can access our Facebook or Twitter feeds on the district webpage at westcarrolltownschools.com. Just click on the Facebook or Twitter icon. So, is your child ready for kindergarten? Enrollment for the school year is open. A child must be five by August 1st and reside within the West Carrollton School District. Enrollments should be completed online at westcarrolltownschools.com by clicking on enrollment and following the instructions under 2021-22 kindergarten enrollment. So, this is fun. I saw this on Facebook today. Our middle school and high school vocal music students will be having a combined live spring concert on Tuesday, May 11th at 6:00 PM. It will be an outdoor event at the school dock stadium, and it's free.
Rain or shine?
Rain or shine, as of now. It's gonna stop raining, Mr. Wolf. And then also, our West Carrollton band will be performing live at a special outdoor concert. The high school band will perform May 12th at 7:00 PM. The sixth grade band will perform May 19th at 6:00 PM, followed by the seventh and eighth grade band at 7:30 PM. At the end of the week, many of us are ready to go home and spend the weekend re-energizing. But on a recent Friday night, the marching band and color guard, along with Laura Berkowski and Erin Longo, stayed very late for a special reason. We've got sirens, we've got lights, we have fire department, we have a lot of things going on here tonight. It's all for one special little boy who's going to get a surprise. And let's just enjoy the parade. So, this all happened when a mom reached out to Laura Berkowski and asked if she would be willing to have our band perform in a parade to celebrate her son's last day of chemo. West Carrollton Police and Fire were there, along with Laura and Erin. There were other employees who came out that evening to be a part of the parade. This is what happens when the pirate community comes together. We want to wish Beckett continued good health and thank his family for allowing us to be part of this celebration. And if you hadn't seen, the news stations all picked this story up. So, I'm so happy Beckett is better. And this week is Employee Appreciation Week. We celebrate all of our employees during the week of National Teacher Appreciation Day, which was yesterday. This week, we recognize the contribution our teachers and support staff make to the success of our pirates. But rather than me talk about it, I will leave it to the experts to tell you about our staff.
What do you like about your teacher?
Oh, she's beautiful.
She's nice.
She's nice.
Is there anything else?
Because she helps me do stuff when I can't do it.
She helps us get to first grade.
She always teaches us math and reading.
I like that he's a kind teacher. And, and a really, and he's really good at teaching us stuff, like math, reading, science, and other things.
I like her helping us.
Do you like your bus driver?
Yes.
And what about the lunch ladies? Do you like the lunch ladies?
Yes!
And what about the people that help you out at lunch when you're on the playground?
Yes.
And my teacher is very kind, helpful, respectful.
What do you like about your teacher?
She's awesome and pretty.
She is pretty, isn't she?
Yes.
So, do you like Ms. Riker?
I love her so much.
So sweet. Mrs. Hafner, could you come up to the podium, please? Alright, so tonight, we would like to congratulate our co-valedictorians Ashton Davy and Keaton Kinderdine, and our salutatorian Zeph Sutter. You can find out more about them and other members of the Class of 2021 by following our Senior Spotlight on our Facebook page. So, tonight, Ashton, if you would mind stepping up with Mrs. Hafner, we have a certificate for you.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate Ashton and Keaton and Zeph. These guys are, are something else. I, I'll let you talk a little bit about your accomplishments, but they are amazing students. And I, as I put in my newsletter, they also are all in band. So, they're not acad, only academically great kids, they are musically great kids. And so, we are very, very proud of them. So, at this time, I'm going to give you your certificate from the board. Congratulations, and I will let you, did you want Ashton to speak? That would be great. Ashton, why don't you tell us about where you're going to school, what your major is, your GPA, and some of the other accomplishments you've had while at West Carrollton?
Yeah, I'm Ashton Davy, and I'm going to Northern Kentucky University. In the fall, I'll be majoring in computer science, or I might switch to data science, but we'll see. And then I'll also at least have a minor in biology. And I was awarded the Life Fellowship at NKU. And that basically combines computer science with more like biological research, basically. It's biomedicine. And at high school, you know, I have a GPA of 4.875.
That's incredible. Good job.
So, yeah, I, I started out, really, it really started in elementary school, where, at Harry Russell, and I was in the ELC program, where I went to, with, with, with Ms. Barter, I'd go to Schnell every week. And then, just starting to do more advanced classes in middle school and getting into high school classes, even during middle school. And I've really just taken every honors and college class I've could, I could. So, stuck with it, and I'm here now.
You've, you've done a lot of things. You're in band, you're a student rep, you've done a great job with that. Tell me some other things you've done while you're here. You were on my Youth Leadership Board.
Yeah.
Pre-COVID.
Yeah, I've done so much. Student Council, robotics team. I love being a member of the robotics team. Think it's a great group of kids there, a lot of great experiences. I'd like to, you know, thank Mr. Neal for running that program. And I also, because Mr. Neal really got me interested in computer science after doing robotics. And then I also kinda wanna thank Mr. Newman. I had him first in eighth grade, taking his honors physical science class. Then I took AP Environmental Science, and then this year, Biology. And that's kinda helped me submit my interest in going into Bi- Biology in the future.
Well, we couldn't be more proud of you, and we will see you at graduation. I know, it's just, well, it's the last day of school, actually. So, at this time, Ashton, we're gonna have you go out with your parents so we can get a photo. Mrs. Taylor's gonna go out in the hallway. She has the camera right now. She's helping me with this since Mrs. Horvitz is not here. But I am proud of you. I know the board is proud of you, and I can't wait to see all your accomplishments. You're gonna go far.
And real quick, because Keaton and Zeph aren't here, you know, I've known them for a long time, all the way going through high school and being in band together. Keaton and I, we've been good friends, you know, we first met each other in sixth grade, or when he came to the middle school, and they said, hey, there's this new kid, and he needs a buddy, so... So, yeah, they're, they're great guys.
Yeah, they are. They are. Thank you. Do you wanna say something?
Yeah, sure. First of all, some school districts, for some reason, are fooling around with things like valedictorian and salutator. I hope we never change that, because what it means to be valedictorian is that every day for about 700 days, you come in here and you've done everything that teachers have asked to do in a very excellent manner. We cannot, we cannot avoid that. We have to do it. Having said that, I'd be alright, except yesterday, in a mail, I got a pamphlet from Montgomery County College Promise. Now, just to let you know what that is, it's a program that's been in existence for about nine years or so now, where they identify students in eighth grade who have potential. Now, I'll say right now, some words don't mean much, and potential is one of them. But they identify students who appear to be, and there's also a financial component to this. So, anyway, for the families. So, it, when they are identified, then they are placed with a mentor for their high school years. And several people in this room have been mentors, okay? I was a mentor for seven years, had two absolutely delightful students to work with. If they keep everything together, they're at least guaranteed full tuition to Sinclair for a couple years. But it could be better than that, because there's several four-year colleges that are in the network. And they might get some good, good money out of all that, if everything hangs together. Now, I, everything would be fine, except for the fact that I got this pamphlet. And I'd like to inject a little bit of negativity into your life, okay? There's some stats in here on these bar graphs. I'm kinda surprised that they made the pamphlet, they made it in there, because it's not good. We had a board member years ago that talked about honest bad news. Well, this is honest bad news. It's bad, and yet, they're honest enough to put it in there. And you need to hear some of this stuff, okay? I'm, it was the sixth cohort, which I'm guessing was the class of maybe 2016 that they looked at, okay? So, there are three different, or two different groups, and three different categories. One of them is those, those students that graduated from high school in 2016. The percentage of them in the College Promise Program who enrolled in the, in the college, okay, from high school. Ninety-five percent, this is the best news on the page, let me just tell you. But ninety-five percent of those students, and you'd expect that. I mean, they, they had been mentored, everything was done to keep them on track and doing everything. You would expect that kinda percentage. So, they got ninety-five percent, did I mention there were 50 of them in the county? Well, there's 50 of them in the county. So, ninety-five percent actually enrolled in after high school. The second statistic is what they call persistence. Persistence means they survived year one, and they stayed around for year two. It's kinda like freshman year in high school. You know, good luck with that. That dropped off to 79%, so they lost a few out of that class. But the really shocking one is the third one, which is graduated from, with either associate's or bachelor's degree. That fell off to 50%. This is 50% of the College Promise students. That's not good. That's not good. You wonder what hap, well, I know what happens. Life gets in the road of, of some people, and they get in their own road, too. You know, it just happens. The other category of note is all students in Montgomery County, okay? Now, you're a part of that statistic right now as a senior in Montgomery County. This really gets interesting, because this, again, this would be the Class of 2016. They probably care, covered that through 2020, so last year, they would've had four years in, okay? Those, of all the stu, seniors in Montgomery County in 2016, 68% enrolled in college after high school. That's to start with. Now, that, that's misleading, because some students maybe went in the military. Someone went out, started working to make some money. You know, there's all sorts of things that go into that. But 68% actually entered college. The persistent year, first year going in the second, that dropped off to 56% actually survived the first year, went in the second. That's not so good. But the real bad one is the third one. Out of that class of 16, who last year probably graduated with associate or bachelor's degree. Thirty-six percent. Thirty-six. And I'll bet you, if you do a, get a statistic about how many people in Montgomery County have degrees, college degrees, it might not be much higher than that. Montgomery County is not exactly a hotbed for a lot of people with college degrees, okay? But 36%. Now, that's a little misleading, maybe. When you first started looking at colleges, there's a big book down in the library that has every college in the whole country on it. And one of the things you should've looked at was graduation rate. You remember doing that? It's an important statistic.
It wasn't a book, but I did look at that.
How, how are they graduating students? What kinda job are they doing to graduate students? We're under tremendous pressure to graduate our students. I don't know whether colleges are under the same kinda pressure. But anyways, if you didn't look at that, I will tell you that in order to get a halfway decent graduation rate, most colleges and universities went to six years. It is now six years to get that figure. And I'm thinking, what happened to four? It was four when I went to school. What happened to five? It's now six. They have to go to six years. Well, who stays in college for six years? Well, some people do. Apparently so. I can't imagine that, but anyway, it happens, okay? So, maybe if I'd have left this, maybe a couple more year, two more years, look at this group, it might be a little higher. But as of probably back in, in last year, 36% actually graduated out of that group that started. So, there's not good stats out there. Now, there's another figure that I, another word I wanna throw out to you, and that's probability. I'm not sure about that word either. But based on what you have done in the high school for the last four years, the probability of your doing very well in high school is very high, extremely high, okay? However, for some people, that doesn't mean anything. It doesn't translate into actually doing anything. It's like potential. So, you need to be very cautious, because as an individual, you have done absolutely fantastic. Everything you've done has been excellent, okay? But you, as a part of a group, and that would be all seniors in Montgomery County, that's not a good statistic. It's probably worse than it was four years ago. And you need to realize that that's out there. You're gonna run into some of those people. And you just have to say, well, I'm not, I'm not a part of that. That's got nothing to do with me. I'm gonna keep doing what I've been doing, okay? You understand? Because statistically, things out there aren't very pretty in terms of college. It seems like everybody or brothers going to college, and that's not true. It seems like a lot of people are graduating. That's not necessarily true. Things aren't happening the way they're supposed to happen, okay? You understand that? So, just make sure that you're different from any of them. And we've talked about this before, so just take care of yourself, okay? Keep doing what you've been doing. Thank you. Oh, and by the way, I'll give you another word of advice. I told my nieces and nephews, and I've told my grandchildren, finish in four. Unless you're in such, special program, do it in four. Why would you pay some school five or six years to go to school? Thank you.
Any comment?
I think I'm ready to take some pictures.
Thank you. Thank you, Ashton. Thank you.
Great answer.
Great answer. Thank you, and congratulations. We'll let them exit out stage left for their pictures.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, come in, babe. And our last slide for tonight is watch for updates regarding graduation. We have been sending out weekly communications to parents. If you have a child in the high school, you should be receiving notification that graduation is at UD on May 27th. And we will also be live streaming the ceremony. And I know I'm not Janine, but that is it for tonight.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And we already did our presentation for our valedictorians and salutatorian. So, now we'll go on to item number 11, and we have a couple discussion items. And the first one, the following topic will be discussed by the Board of Education. The public is invited to observe this discussion. Generally, the board will take no formal action on discussion topics, however. In those instances where the board may choose to act, such notice will be given during the introduction of the discussion. In those instances where the board may choose to act, such notice will be given during the introduction of the discussion topic. And this evening, we have two, and they will both be voted on. So later on in the meeting, uh, we will get to those. So we will start off with our review of the proposed policies.
Thank you. So policy number twenty-three seventy-oh-one is a blended learning policy for just next year. For our students to be able to kid, continue, um, who are currently enrolled in schools. P L P survey was sent out, and if their parents would like for them to stay in there, they need to fill out an application. So for, in order us, for us to do this, we have to, um, adopt the policy, and then I have to submit a form to O D E. And then our other policy is twenty-four thirteen, career advising. This is our regular policy. We have to re-adopt it every two years, there's no changes. Um, and that is it. Is there any questions about the new policy?
Any questions?
You did, I don't, I'm sorry. You did say it's for just next school year.
Next school year, correct.
So for now, this is one year, and we'll see about after that.
We kind of have this policy already for what we've done this year with our blended learning, going back and forth between hybrid and all of that. So it was granted to us through, um, the governor and the Department of Education, but now we have to have a specific policy for next year.
All right. And as previously said, we will be voting on this item number twenty. When we get to that, it will be pertaining to those two policies that we just went over. So now we'll go on to our second discussion. Uh, and we have, uh, our business manager, Mr. Jack Haig, who's going to walk us through this.
Along with, uh, Mr. Sloan and Dr. Townsend.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, um, on this discussion topic, we're talking about two resolutions we've added on to the agenda concerning the building project. First, I want to apologize for the short notice, but these were, the sheets I gave you, if you look at the first sheet, um, it kind of lays down some alternates that we were looking at or thinking about accepting or, or hoping to recommend for acceptance to the board. At eight o'clock yesterday morning, we, I received an email from the construction company, Shook, saying, hey, our vendors are telling us that the prices we quoted you are on a limited time basis now because of the volatility in the construction market, especially of steel and other building resources. So some of these items, they can only hold the price through, some is only through May seventh, um, if we don't accept it, others only go through the fourteenth, and then some go till June first. So we found out that we had to move pretty quickly to accept those if we wanted them without paying higher prices for the construction. So looking at it, not knowing where those prices were going to go, we met and, uh, Leslie and Don were in there with us. We met yesterday morning, we discussed this. We came up with the list of what, if we were going to approve it, we need to do it now to lock those prices in. Put some other things on that they said they could hold the prices till August. Thought we'll wait till July on those items and see, uh, what sort of funding comes available, how the costs run for construction, and what can come back around. You know, our goal on this whole project has always been to spend, you know, the voters voted for forty-four million, uh, forty-four point nine million dollars for this project, or forty-four million, five hundred ninety thousand dollars for this project. We want to spend at least that much on these buildings. We don't want to come away from them and say, hey, look, we got a million dollars left over. We want to put everything we can in these buildings for the staff and the students on this. So by doing this, we're asking the board to go ahead and approve a resolution for some alternates valued at five hundred and fourteen thousand and change, um, to get them locked into the building. What they'll give us, that'll give us, um, upgrade our gymnasiums to wood gym floors. It'll allow us to add bleachers so the commu- community could use those for games on the weekends. Plus, if we have activities in the gym for the schools, there's a place for the students to sit, um, by adding that in. Putting side baskets on, so that way the gyms could be more versatile, and we could split the gyms down if we need to for gym class or other activities. Um, a lot of it has to do with cosmetics, um, in the buildings. Um, increasing the appeal of the main doorways and the, where the hallways intersect by adding more color and more signage. Some of it is bringing some warmth in by adding some wood tones, which is one of the suggestions that came from one of our interior design meetings we had. And then others are adding sta- or adding additional parking to both buildings. Everybody says, well, additional parking is not pretty, but trust me, that first day when we go to open these buildings and we invite people in, and we don't have enough parking spaces, additional parking is going to be a great thing to have starting out. You know, there's no sense in trying to add it later. And, you know, the cost is going to be higher because you have to tap into the storm sewers and bring all this back around again. So that's why we came for that one. On the second resolution then, is asking us for some ability to approve change orders. And we met with, um, our attorneys from Bricker and Eckler and talked to them about it, and he gave us, well, as a matter of fact, he wrote up a very good resolution that has most of the language in it. But what it's asking is for the superintendent to have that ability to, up to a set amount, approve change orders on the project so we don't have to delay construction and hold off on a change order that might affect the finish date for the project. Um, and if the board approves that, then that will allow her and the treasurer to make sure that we have that leeway to approve those change orders in stride so we don't, so we don't lose momentum on the project and have to wait until a board meeting or call a special board meeting to approve something and we delay construction. We're in a tight schedule. We're building these buildings, um, in under eighteen months, which is a typical two-year project. So we, um, every, every day counts. And, uh, by doing this, we think it'll help move forward. Uh, Sean Lehman from Bricker and Eckler, when he spoke to us about this, he said that, you know, this is a common practice, and normally they pick a percentage or an amount or something to come back. The percentage we're going with is we're asking for the ability to approve change orders that are less than one percent of the cost of the project. So, and anything over and above that, then we will have to come back to the school board to ask for approval on that, to move forward with it, um, on that. We did meeting, talking about it, and we brought in another attorney from Bricker and Eckler to help us through this, to talk about the finances. And we know that on this first phase, if we approve the alternate bids tonight for the five hundred and fourteen thousand, that we do have the funds available in the project or, or in the district to go ahead and apply towards that and lock that money into the purchase order to move forward. And I will, I, we will answer any questions you have. Or Ryan, do you have anything else to add on the financing?
Uh, just, just to point out that, you know, these alternates, they, you know, they were, they were in, in our plans. They were in the budget, um, twelve, fifteen months, twelve, fifteen months ago. But, you know, back then, there was bu- there was budget uncertainty in, in terms of how the bids were going to come in. So, so these are things that we, that we had to take out of the budget at that time. Um, I mean, so these are things that we wanted from the get-go. We just had to take them out of the budget twelve, fifteen months ago. And, and now that we have, now that Shook has our final, you know, the bids came in a little bit lower. Um, and, you know, we have, we have, um, we have ex- we have money, um, you know, the, the, the bond proceeds are generating interest income, um, which is a little bit of additional money we have to, to pay for alternates. So, uh, so these are not new things. These are, these are things we wanted from the get-go, and, and, you know, we have the funding to, to take care of these things.
On the, uh, I think, third page, which I guess is under resolution, maybe what, number one? Um, approving change orders. Uh, there's some words that I read, and I don't like them. Add is one of them. Increase is another. But there's a word that I do like, and it's less. Could you explain the actual amount of the buyout savings?
Right now, the buyout savings is sitting at about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, okay? And what that is, is when, you know, we signed a contract with Shook saying that construction will come in at a specific number, like thirty-five, six. I'm just, I, I'm rounding things, okay? About thirty-five million, six hundred thousand dollars. Anything that comes in over that amount, Shook's responsible for it. We don't pay any of that. Anything that comes in under that amount goes back into our contingency on the owner's side where we can reinvest that into the project if needed. So an example would be, uh, windows came in under budget. Um, that was a huge help. Technology has come in under budget, so that's helping us out, so we reinvest that money. The other thing is, we also applied for E-rate to purchase some of our technology. That'll turn out to be about a two hundred thousand dollar savings. That'll come back to the district as a form of a change order credit, where we'll have that money to push back into the project by saving it, by letting the federal government pay for some of our, some of our technology, um, our access points for Wi-Fi and such, where they'll pay eighty percent of the cost of it. So those savings all come back around, and that comes in as a credit as this. So that's why that, um, owner's contingency amount that we have is a little flexible on that. That's why some will come in less and some will be additions on it.
Well, you, you used a word that, uh, I want to go back to, and that's contingencies.
Yeah.
The last time we discussed all this stuff, I think, it'd be other times, we talked about contingencies, and it seems to me we spent some. And I just wonder what the status of our contingencies are now. Uh, are you suggesting that we're, uh, over with that or under with that, or where are we?
We have about three hundred and ninety-four thousand in our owner's contingency on this. The good news for us is as bids come in and stuff, there's not really many times we're going to need that contingency on that part of it because the groundwork's done, pipes are run, and a lot of what we're going to be spending our contingency on would have been stuff in the soils that we didn't know about. It's the unknown that we would have to pay for on the construction project. We've been through mostly unknown because we've got gas, sewer, water, and electric are all run to the site. So that unknown has been taken care of. Foundations, footers are in the ground, so all that's been taken care of. So now the contingencies are there for us to reinvest back into the project on this by doing these add alternates. Again, like Ryan said, items we wanted in the project, but we cut out because we weren't sure what the budget was going to look like. But now we can slide them back in there.
You don't get me wrong, I fully expect every time I raise a question for you to have a good answer. So, uh, you know, that's just the way I feel about this. And you?
Thank you.
Um, you know, a year ago, when we were getting bids in here, COVID was throwing everything for a loop, and it still is. Two weeks ago, I bidded a job for a customer, uh, needed some hardy becker, which is concrete board for under tile. This week, I went to buy it. It was forty-four dollars more sheet, I needed a hundred sheets. So I know it's going both ways right now. Some of those things were bidded high because of, that was the current pricing six months ago, eight months ago, three months ago, three weeks ago. And as those bids finally come in, some of those things are coming back down. I know it's going to be like this all the way through the project, because it's, it's going to take us five years to recover from this as far as, uh, construction industry is concerned, uh, as well as everything else in the world. But, um, with the money that comes back at the end of this project, if we've got a savings that comes back, can that money transfer to the next part of the project? If we've got three hundred thousand dollars in contingency, does that money still stay with us and go on to the next phase?
It could, it could. Our goal is to not to let any money come back. Is to, if you look, that's why we have a couple of different phases of adding bid alternates back into it based off when we could lock those in to make sure that we can buy as much back into this project as possible. Um, I would love to get to the point where it's, you know, we have a hundred thousand dollars set aside for an allowance for playgrounds, where if we say we've got thirty-five or forty thousand dollars left, then let's put that money back into playgrounds, or let's put that money back into the classroom or improve different technologies so that that building's ready to go with that full investment in it before that first day of school.
It, this is a, a complete project, um, meaning that they're already going to start working on the asphalt this summer for the, uh, pre-K one and the, uh, the other, the five, six building. But i- in, in the mix of this is also landscaping, sidewalks, trees, shrubbery, the whole nine yards. It's, it covers from A to Z, so I'm sure we can put it back in somewhere and add.
You know, we know there's, we know there's some change orders coming that'll affect it, that, and that's one of the reasons for the other part of the other resolution is change orders. Um, uh, one, you know, some are design flaws where they miss something in design. Uh, one is the treasurer's office. They forgot to include a vault. It's kind of something we need for our, put it this way, there's no fireproof record storage in the treasurer's office, which we kind of have to save like board minutes and stuff going back to the eighteen hundreds. So we've had to put a change order in to, um, steal part of the E C C's fire room and turn it into our vault, um, which, lucky for us, it backs up to their storage room for the treasurer's office, so we're able to do that at a lower cost. But we know that'll be a change order because they didn't do that, so we've added that in. But we'll have some items like that, that during construction, somebody will walk away and say, hey, look, you got this, uh, um, you know, you got this fire extinguisher box sitting right here where you have a, a plumbing fixture coming up through. We've already cut it out, and they'll have to move it, and then that'll come back as a change order. We might see if there's a cost associated with it, so.
I just think, I just think there's a lot of unforeseen with, with the COVID and, and the construction. And when we get down to the wire and we've got all of our electronics wired in, we've got all of our landscape done, all of our asphalt's done, they, they can come back and say, oh, we still have a little bit of money left over because we didn't use it up for this, or we got a better discount on the shrubbery, because that's, that's going to happen.
And that's where some of this, some of this stuff at the bottom, you'll see that says hold, that's in like that light tan. Some of that, like poured-in-place playgrounds are down there right now because we're hoping that we'll be able to do poured-in-place playground surface so we don't have wood mulch or rubber mulch that gets kicked out and brushed out. Um, that's why that's down there because we don't have to accept that yet. But as we start to look at how the budget goes, we can start pulling some of those back in to put that money back into it.
I know we had a quite, uh, heavy wish list like every district does, but, uh, that's kind of nice we're getting the stuff put back in.
Yep, exactly.
I have a question, just to kind of clarify that I understand, um, your explanation on the cap for the change orders. If I just use the example you gave me that we're talking about when it comes to, um, the limit on how much the expense can be for the change order to just go through the superintendent and her, her advisory situation, whatever, how y'all work that out. This list we have on page three, the two items that I see that would go above the cap, if I'm not misunderstanding it, are the parking amounts, which total just over eighty thousand each. That would, would that be an example of something that the change order would be excessive, and we'd have to vote on that again?
Yeah, well, right now, you're going to vote on this as a separate issue on all these are listed here.
I understand that, but I'm saying going forward.
If we go forward, yeah, if we go forward and we've used a contingency fund, or we've used it down to there's very little money in it, and then we ran into something like that where it's like an eighty thousand dollar change order, then we might say, hey, we don't have eighty thousand in that, so we need to go back to the board now and have them approve it because we can't spend more money than you guys approve. And right now, that's tied to our owner's contingency. So once that owner's contingency is spent down, then any change orders after that point, we will come back to the school board, and you guys will have to okay them before we can move forward. But we will monitor that, and part of this, what we'll do is we'll give you guys monthly updates so you'll know where we're at, where the funds are at, and any change orders that we had during that time, we'll kind of lay those out for you and why we had them and what, what that money went to, went to, uh, pay for.
Another part of it, real quick, is, so the last, uh, contract we approved with Shook was, was the guaran- was the not to exceed like thirty-five point six million. And, and eight hundred and twenty thousand of that thirty-five point six million is, is this, is Shook's contingency. I mean, it's called Shook's contingency, but it's really our contingency with Shook. So, so there's eight hundred and twenty thousand contingency, and then, then, and then there's our owner, three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollar contingency. So, um, so I mean, those two added together, you know, we have a little bit more than one point two million in contingency. So, um, so I mean, tho- those two buckets will be used the next twelve, fourteen months to, um, you know, to, to pay for change orders and alternates, so.
All right. Is everybody understanding what we're doing? We've got, okay. Um, again, we will be approving, uh, this is item number twenty-five and number twenty-six later in the meeting. All right. Uh, we will go on to item number twelve, which deals with certificated personnel items. Mr. Berry, good evening.
Good evening. All right. The superintendent recommends that the board approve the following personnel items. Item twelve A, accept the ratification of the resignation of the listed individual. Item twelve B, non-renew all of the listed substitute teachers uh, effective at the end of the twenty-twenty, twenty-one school year. Item twelve C, grant a supplemental people activity contract to the listed individuals for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year. Item twelve D, amend the leave of absence for the listed employee. And item twelve E, grant a leave of absence to the listed individuals in accordance with the provisions of the Family Medical Leave Act.
I need a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion?
The teacher that is resigning has been on a two-year leave of absence and she has decided to stay in Canada. So she, she's working on her citizenship there, so, uh,
Well, we wish her well.
Congratulate Carly. And, um, item B, uh, those are all the substitutes. We do this every year at this time of year.
Yes, we hope we get them all back in.
Exactly. And I, I would definitely like to thank all of those substitutes for sticking with us this year.
Okay. Any questions or comments from Mr. Berry? Roll call, please.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Item number thirteen deals with some personnel items. Mr. Berry?
Superintendent recommends that the board approve the following personnel items. Item twelve, I'm sorry, thirteen A, rescind one supplemental people activity contract for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year. Um, item thirteen B, grant a supplemental people activity contract to one individual for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year. Item thirteen C, approve one individual as an athletic event worker for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year.
All right. I need a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? No, okay. All right, any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
I'm staying. Item number fourteen deals with classified personnel items. Mr. Berry?
Superintendent recommends that the board approve the following personnel items. Item A, accept the resignation of one individual for retirement purposes. B, accept the resignation of two individuals. Item C, employ three individuals pending approval by the Bureau of Criminal Identification and Investigation and Concentra Drug Screening as required by Ohio Revised Code thirty-three nineteen point two-nine-one and the policies of the West Carrollton City School District. Item fourteen D, amend the medical leave of absence for two indi- individuals. Item fourteen E, amend the unpaid leave of absence for the listed individual. F, grant a leave of absence to two individuals in accordance with the provisions of the Family Medical Leave Act. And item fourteen G, grant a leave of absence to one individual.
All right. I need a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I'll just say Vicki Marchese is on the agenda for retiring. She's been a cook in the district for many years in many different buildings. You know, she has been at Nicholas and E C C and Russell, and now she's over at the middle school right now. She's both excited and sad. She's excited to start retirement, but she's sad for leaving the district. Um, I spoke to her last week and it's just, uh, very heartfelt for her. She's really enjoyed her time here and we've really enjoyed having her here. So this will be a tough one to lose on that, but, um, we wish her the best moving forward.
Thank you. All right. Any questions or comments, you guys? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Item number fifteen deals with an administrator contract. Dr. Townsend?
Thank you. I'd like to recommend that the West Carrollton Board of Education grant an administrative contract to the following administrator for the period of time indicated.
I need a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, sure. This is, uh, our second contract for Mrs. Taylor, so.
Hi.
Um, which is great, so.
Okay.
Glad we get a keeper.
Any questions or comments? We li- we like having her around, yes.
We do.
Um, roll call, please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Okay. Item number sixteen deals with some more administrative contracts.
I'd like to recommend that the West Carrollton Board of Education grant an administrative contract to the following administrators for the period of time indicated.
Okay, I need a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
And any discussion?
Our school psychs, and they do a fantastic job.
Yes, they do.
I gotta just say that every time you hear news items about young people these days, they, they talk about mental health and, and, uh, the effects of the, the pandemic on so many young, well, everybody, but particularly young people. So it certainly heightens everything we're doing, uh, in that area.
Well, these aren't our mental health therapists. These are our school psychs that help us with our I E P students.
Okay. Um, roll call, please.
Mr. He- Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Item number seventeen deals with our administrative personnel schedule. Dr. Townsend?
Great, thank you. Um, I'd like to recommend that the board approve the administrative salary and benefits schedule for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year as presented and place the following administrative personnel in the following positions and the following steps effective August first, twenty-twenty-one.
I need a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
It's our normal.
Just our normal thing. Okay. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Item eighteen deals with our support staff. Dr. Townsend?
I'd like to recommend that the board approve the central office support staff salary and benefits schedule for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two as presented and place the following personnel in the following positions at the following levels and steps effective July first, twenty-twenty-one.
I need a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any comments? Just our normal thing. All right. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Item number nineteen deals with a school calendar. Dr. Townsend?
Thank you. I'd like to recommend that the board adopt the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school calendar as presented in Appendix A.
I need a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah. Comments?
First of all, I'd like to thank the calendar committee. Um, I enjoy working with them as we create the calendars. Um, this calendar ties into the openings of our new building, so we had some different challenges, um, than we normally do. Um, but we got it done pretty quickly and, um, it's exciting knowing that this will be the calendar and hopefully it will remain the same because our buildings are on track, um, for the, that year.
Any questions? Comments? Nope. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes. Item number twenty, these are the policies that we discussed in our discussion section earlier in the meeting. Dr. Townsend?
I need a motion in a second that the West Carrollton Board of Education approve as presented. Oh, wait a minute, sorry. That the board adopted as presented the proposed policies, I jumped down, um, of the West Carrollton Board of Education. Policy number two-three-seven-zero-point-zero-one, blended learning and our career advising, twenty-four thirteen.
All right. A motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Item number twenty-one deals with our school resource officer. Dr. Townsend?
Um, I need a motion in a second that the West Carrollton School, um, Board of Education approve as presented the memorandum of understanding between the City of West Carrollton and the Board of Education of the West Carrollton School District regarding the School Resource Officer S R O program.
I need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Comments?
Um, sure. This is, um, earlier than usual. Um, this is for, uh, Tiffany. And, um, I didn't want it to get lost in the weeds. Sometimes we, it gets pushed off and pushed off, so I contacted the city and we decided to do it earlier this year.
Does, um, does Tiffany have, um, does she have an office in the high school? I'm assuming she does?
She does.
Okay.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Item number twenty-two, Mr. Berry. I will turn it over to you.
Requesting a motion in a second that the West Carrollton Board of Education approve as presented the memorandum of understanding between the West Carrollton Education Association and the Board of Education of the West Carrollton School District regarding a contract extension.
Okay. And we need a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Comments?
This is our agreement that we have, um, with the W C E A. And, um, I think that it went very smoothly and we're asking that it be extended one more year.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Item number twenty-three deals with our other union, W C C E A. Mr. Hague?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'd ask that the West Carrollton Board of Education approve as presented the memorandum of understanding between the West Carrollton Classified Employees Association and the Board of Education of the West Carroll School District regarding a wages and benefits re opener.
I need a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Comments?
Uh, this will be the, this is the final year of their contract on this, so this will be the final wage re opener. Next year we'll be going back to a full negotiations of language and everything along with it.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
I think we're playing musical chairs with the. Uh, item number twenty-four, um, is dealing with a supplemental contract. Mr. Berry?
Need a motion in a second that the West Carrollton Board of Education approve as presented the memorandum of understanding between the West Carrollton Education Association and the Board of Education of West Carrollton School District regarding a supplemental contract for competition cheerleading coach.
All right. We need a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Comments?
It was absent from our supplemental list. We, uh, we've kind of been doing it informally and adding it as an addition to our head cheerleading coach supplemental. And, um, the task has become a bit too large for her to handle. So we think to move and to continue to compete within the league, we needed to, um, add an i- a line item to specifically compensate that person.
Any comments or questions?
So this is new, right?
Somewhat.
Somewhat new. Yes. We've had it before.
So the league, um, when we're looking at Title Nine, to keep things even with male and female sports, when we look across the M V L, um, everyone else had a line item for competition cheerleading. We have been participating, but we've kind of added it on as an extra duty for the head cheerleading coach. So when the head leader, cheerleading coach, uh, resigned, um, the next person is looking at just being the cheerleading coach, not doing two jobs for one supplemental.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm staying. I'm sorry. I should have. I forgot about that. Uh, we have our addendum items. And item, new item number twenty-five, Mr. Hague?
In the future, we're asked Tammy to put all Devon's items in order, then all my items in order and kind of keep this whole.
I enjoy seeing you running back and forth. It's quite fun.
I feel like I should be jumping off the turnbuckle in the corner next and come down on somebody.
Could you demonstrate that, please?
Yes.
Only once.
It's all I ask.
I'd ask that the West Carrollton Board of Education approve as presented a resolution authorizing the approval and execution of change orders for the new P K one building and five-six building project.
We need a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
And this is what we discussed in our prior discussion items. All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
And new item number twenty-six, Mr. Hague?
Yes, I'd ask that the West Carrollton Board of Ed- Education approve as presented a resolution approving a change order to accept alternates for the new P K one building and five-six building project.
We need a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
All right, and roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
All right. Now we can move on to our comments or reports section of our meeting and we'll go to committee reports. I even hate to ask. You have one, don't you?
Um, yeah, a couple of high school things.
Okay.
Sort of. Uh, I did see in the paper a week or so ago that, uh, John Strawn had died. Uh, John and his wife Martha moved to West Carrollton, oh, in the fifties. And, uh, he taught science. Uh, you got to remember in the fifties, um, the, uh, the old, what's, what's hidden inside the, the middle school was pretty much a seven-twelve. So some of these teachers could have a seventh grade science class and a twelfth grade. John actually was my, uh, senior physics teacher. And, uh, anyways, he, he died recently. Uh, what's more significant about him is that, um, in nineteen sixty-one, um, Harry Russell retired, I think after thirty-some years easily with the district. You started seeing his picture in composites back in the twenties. So he was around a long, long time, a absolutely beloved man. But he did retire and, um, John Strawn became principal at the high school. And he was there for, oh, I don't know, ten, twelve years. And then, I'm not sure what was going on then. I was at the junior high. But rather abruptly, I want to say in February, he left and went to Columbus and I think started working for a high department of education. I'm not sure what that was all about, but, uh, that's what happened. But anyways, John was principal of the high school for, uh, for quite some time. Um, speaking of the high school, some of you might know that tonight we were over at the pre-K, K-one building, uh, walking around observing, uh, some things that were, had been accomplished. It was very impressive. This belongs in the what goes around, comes around category. I knew I had a picture. And this, I thought, I thought they could cat, Mrs. Moore? I thought they could video things and put up on a screen, but I guess technology-wise, no. So this is what, this is what they're going to be looking at at home, this picture down here. So this is what, this is what they're going to be looking at at home, this picture down here. Not sure you can see that, but this picture was probably taken in nineteen fifty-nine. Nineteen fifty-nine. And it shows board members walking around the area of the new high school that was being built in nineteen fifty-nine, right there. And in some ways it looked a little similar to tonight, but I guarantee you, I asked a question about wiring and what's underground in that building over there is just unbelievable. This building probably didn't have half the, the stuff underground that, that that one does. But I was trying to get a perspective of, of this picture and I, I think, you can't see this, but in the background, there are some houses and I believe they are on Homedale, which is a street over from Holly Hawk, not Holly Hawk, but Student Street. Student Street came a lot later, probably than this picture.
Bigger lots.
They, they built Student Street after the high school was built and it probably only went back to the high school parking gro- parking lot. But these buildings, these houses over here, I'm assuming are on, uh, uh, Homedale, which is the next street over. And I think way in the background there is probably Judson Baptist Church. So it's, it's been that long ago, i- i- and such, nineteen fifty-nine, nineteen fifty-nine. I'm trying to get a, some kind of sense of where this picture was taken and I'm thinking, given all this plumbing here, I'm going to say very possibly it was a kitchen. It was an area around the kitchen. Because I was thinking maybe it'd be the boys' one-hundred's restroom, but the plumbing doesn't go in the right direction for those. But anyways, again, what goes around, comes around, in nineteen fifty-nine, board members were tromping around the new high school grounds, which would, would be built later in sixty. And tonight, we were tromping around over at the, um, grounds for the preschool K-one. And in a couple of weeks, we're going to go up to the five-six and do the same thing. So, you know, things, things, things happen. Actually, after the high school was completed, and, and there's a story there, I already mentioned the fact that in sixty-one, after that year was completed, Harry Russell retired. But one of the things they did, and I guess it was on purpose probably, but they had construction delays at the high school. That, that picture might have been taken in as late as late fifty-nine, maybe early sixty. They had a lot of work to do and it was delayed. And so comes August of, of sixty and they, they couldn't get in here. That happened a couple of times to buildings. So anyways, in sixty, they went double sessions with the junior high, which was sitting over there where the, where the middle school, inside the middle school. But what they ended up doing in, in late, in November of sixty is when they moved in this building, not this building, not this part, this part didn't exist. And I need to digress a little bit. We went thirty years without an auditorium in this building. I don't know how they ever did that. Because every assembly had to be in the, in the gym and the creaky old bleachers and all that kind of stuff. It was terrible. And every musical had to be over at the, at the junior high. So it, it took that long to get the auditorium built. But anyways, back to nineteen sixty, they moved into this building in November on Harry Russell's birthday. Now how about that? How, how about that kind of a tribute to the guy? Everybody loved him. And so they moved in this building on his birthday. But then at the end of that year, in late, in, in sixty-one, he retired and John Strawn took his place and all that kind of stuff. But anyways, that's a little history for you.
Tom, could that picture have been the home ec area? It had a lot of plumbing.
I, I can't tell.
Okay.
I, I think there's too much going for the cafeteria. I don't know. But anyways, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any committee reports this evening? Okay, we'll go to comments for us, superintendent.
Thank you.
Dr. Townsend?
Just a reminder about the spring concerts. I'd like to give a shout out to our music department who not only held a play, but also have figured out a way to have a choral concert and a band concert. So please come and join the kids and especially this week, I'd like to thank all of our staff, our nurses and teachers, especially during this week, for all of their hard work and dedication to our students. We couldn't do this without you and you are greatly appreciated. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sloan, anything this evening?
I just want to say congratulations and best wishes to Ashton. I won't give you any, I got advice for you, but I won't give it to you tonight.
Take another picture.
We have a finance committee meeting next week. We'll start discussions about, just in, in May, every May, we do an update to our five-year forecast that we approved back in the fall. So we'll have that meeting next week and then we'll look at the five-year forecast at our next board meeting and but those number, you know, one of the biggest variables will be the state funding and, you know, the state legis- you know, the Ohio House has approved their version of school, the school funding bill. It's in the senate right now, so it's anybody's guess, you know, what it will look like come June thirty. So we'll just keep an eye on that and, but it's, I mean, yeah, who knows what the senate's going to do compared to what the house did. So we'll follow that and adjust accordingly. That's it.
Okay, thank you. I believe we have some members of our West Carrollton Education Association, if you would like to come up, please.
Hi.
Hi there.
My name is Alyssa Springer. It's my ninth year in the district. I teach music. And I am up here just as a representative of the WCEA. So over the past year, the teachers of the West Carrollton City Schools have worked tirelessly to provide an enriching, engaging, and safe learning environment for our students. We've done whatever the boards asked us to do whenever the board asks, sometimes with little to no notice. We were online, in person, online again, hybrid, finally fully in person. Each time, teachers have risen to the challenge and have done what the board and more so the students of West Carrollton Schools needed them to do. Unfortunately, it's been brought to our attention that some school board members and their spouses have taken to making disparaging comments about the teachers and the district on social media. That's a big pill to swallow. The WCEA feels that this not only misrepresents our teachers, but also sends an inaccurate and negative picture of our school district to the community. We feel that the job of a school board should be to encourage and support the teachers, not to belittle them. And this is just coming from me, the ridiculous amount of hard work they put into this district. In closing, we are asking not only for these disparaging mark- remarks by the board and its family members to stop, but to begin a more positive dialogue with the community about the teachers and the district on social media. We ask that we be treated with the respect that we have earned as professionals. Thank you so much for your time. Again, I'm just a representative of the WCEA membership.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from the Classified Employee Association? No, okay. We'll go on to central office staff. Mr. Berry, anything this evening?
Definitely wanted to congratulate Ashton, maybe a few representatives of all the students at the high school. And we started our hiring season with both five positions. One position, in three positions now, hundred and sixty-six applicants in twenty years. Social studies at the middle school, a hundred and twenty-four. So we have plenty of people still interested in remaining working. This is always very time. We started our interview this week, by the end of the week, we have twenty-one and we're going.
All right, Mr. Hague, anything this evening?
I also want to congratulate Ashton. Congratulations. I know he's going to be successful. There's nothing better than stopping by the West Carrolltown branch of the library and who aren't running into it. Ashton walking out, so it's kind of, it's a good sign to know that the high school kids know how to find the local libraries. That's a, that's a good sign of success right there.
Great, thank you. We do not have any general comments from the public this evening, so we'll go on to comments from the board and we'll start with Mr. Wolf.
Thank you. I want to formally, take this time to formally announce that I will not seek reelection to my board position in November. I will not be on the ballot. Basically, there are only two reasons. One is my age. I know some people at the CTC who are on boards in their eighties. I don't plan to be that person and if I were reelected in November, I would eventually get there. So I'm just not going to run in November. I do want to make it very clear, oh, the other issue, obviously, is I am currently dealing with some health issues and I'm working my way through that, but all that together kind of says, hey, maybe it's time. A second point is that I fully intend to complete my term in office, which would go through December. Absolutely. I need the money and. Seriously. And, and the third point is that I'm announcing that now. So hopefully, several people in the community can seriously consider serving on the board and go about what needs to be done to get on the ballot. Basically, it involves getting a petition. You complete these different parts of the petition and then you get minimum of seventy-five valid registered voters in the district. And I strongly recommend that you get more like ninety to a hundred while you're at it. And, and to, to close this all out, the deadline, it seems a long way away, but it's not. The deadline for getting those petitions into the Montgomery County Board of Elections is August the fourth. Again, that seems like a ways off, but no, 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 no. So I just, again, I wanted to make that announcement and get that out there so that people have an opportunity to, to, to go for that seat. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We won't be together then, if we, we won't be together anymore if you. Sorry. Yes. Mr. Henry, anything this evening? Seems like it's been a long spring. But it finally got here. And coming with spring is our recognition of our teaching staff and our support staff. Tom Wolf and I have been in our buildings this week distributing gifts. And the comments I've heard have been, thank you, this is very nice. Thanks for thinking of us individually. But it's so much more than that. Tom and I both have known so many of our employees for so many years that it's a pleasure to serve our community on the Board of Education. And second, Mr. Davy, congratulations, wish you the best. It's going to come your way because you're going to work so hard to earn it and be successful. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Cox, anything this evening?
Just a couple of things. Congratulations to Ashton, Keaton, and Zeph. Quite the accomplishment. Best of luck to you. I'm guessing that, that handing out the appreciation stuff was by email, which I am not receiving right now for, for whatever, for the. As I say, I'm not receiving any emails, but we'll take care of that later. So I'd like to thank all the teachers and the staff for all their hard work over the last year. I know it's been very taxing, very stressful. You guys have bent over backwards, twisted into pretzels, and came out fighting, so thank you very much for that. I'm going to keep it short. I'm trying to make eleven in track meet. My son is just now warming up, so that will end of that and best of luck to the Pirates at the track meet.
Thank you. Mr. Llewellyn?
Ashton, you, we know what you're doing. Do you have any idea what Keaton and Zeph are doing as far as college or anything like that? Okay, cool, thank you. Is it, okay. Well, congratulations. Nice, thank you. But congratulations, of course, an unbelievable GPA. That's just. Since they're co-valuetory, that means both of them had basically the same GPA, right? That's just amazing. The last thing I, I would like to mention is we had, with PowerPacks, we had a, we had a fundraiser with a new club in West Carrollton. It's a West Carrollton Baseball Club, it's called, I believe. Basically, it's new. It just started with Olivia Davis, if you remember her. Her mom and dad started this club. They have thirteen or fourteen teams signed up and they did a mac and cheese and ravioli pasta, little microwave cups that, that we put in the packs. They had a, a contest between all the teams and whoever won and brought the most of those would win a pizza party. From Brew and Brew, if anybody knows that pizza, it's just across from Home Depot, I think. But between all the teams, they donated two thousand thirty cups or mac and cheeses to us, which will probably last a couple of months for us when the school year starts in the fall. So just an unbelievable, that's well over a two thousand dollar value with just kids and their parents bringing, bringing that to help us when the twenty-one, twenty-two school year starts. So I certainly want to publicly thank them and everybody who participated in that to, to raise that many items to help the kids with food next year. That's all I have.
Thank you. I'll just go over some of the things everyone else up here has. First of all, I'd like to thank all of our employees for the wonderful job that you have done this past year. All the way from the custodians, the teachers, the bus drivers. I've been with the bus driver slot lately. I slum in the bus garage. So it, it's, it's been a yo-yo year of asking people to do above and beyond and you all did a wonderful job. Like to thank you all for that. I'm sorry, I have not been able to get out and, and give out gifts this week. The weather has been a disaster for tennis. And tomorrow, we're going to Sydney for the MVL tournament. Rain or shine, hopefully it doesn't rain. It's got a fifty percent chance, so we'll see. But it, it's just been a very difficult time and hopefully, we will. And hopefully, we will get into more of a normal year next year. Uh, we can only hope for that to happen, um, for our employees and our kids, because it's hit them pretty hard. Um, like to congratulate Ashton again and, uh, Keaton and Zeph. So, um, best of luck and everything. Like I said before, you'll do wonderful, I'm sure. Spring has got all of our, our, uh, athletes out and about. Uh, like I said, uh, we've got M V L tomorrow. We have our, uh, on Monday, we have sectionals. Hopefully it doesn't rain. Uh, it's rain dates. But track is out there, baseball's out there, softball's out there. We're all doing our thing. Uh, hopefully the rain clouds diminish and go away for all of us uh, so that we can complete our season. But the best, the best thing is, we had a season. We had a spring season this year, which is wonderful. Uh, cause last year, we did not. And sadly, some of those seniors did not get to complete their senior years. So, uh, this year, we have. And this year, we're also going back to the University of Dayton for our graduation. Yay! Uh, so we, we're, we're on the right track if we can just round the bend. And hopefully that will happen as well. Um, let's see. We do not have an executive session this evening, nor do we have any work sessions. So I will entertain a motion in a second to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
I knew he was going to.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
This concludes this meeting. Thank you.